Almighty and everlasting God who presides over all things in heaven and earth, come and preside over these deliberations so that those that make the decisions may be guided by your wisdom.
Thank you, Bill.
It was locked.
Real call, please, Ms. Pink.
Mr. Brooks.
Here.
Mr. Marconi.
Here.
Ms. Gilbert is excused. Mr. Barrett.
Here.
Mr. Belishko.
Here.
Also in attendance is Administrator Charles McCormick, Assistant City Attorney Maureen Collins, Assistant City Clerk Tracy Smith, and Administrative Assistant Lisa Samper. Should we do that now?
I just want to announce that I met with counsel immediately prior to this meeting in executive session to review some pending litigation against the city involving tax assessment appeals filed by Terrace Holdings LLC, 32 Center LLC, and 173 Gilligan Street LLC.
Thank you, Maureen.
Good evening. Welcome to tonight's regular session of council. Please turn off all cell phones. Following our examples of some important council rules, they are not intended to be a complete list. Please adhere as closely as possible to the five-minute speaker presentation time limit. No persons are allowed to address the council from beyond the rail except the speaker at the dais who has the floor. The chairperson shall preserve order and decorum and prevent attacks on personalities. The chairperson shall determine all points of order. No person except city officers or their representatives should be permitted within the rail during any meeting without the express permission of council. Council kindly asks that the public please vacate the building within 10 minutes after the meeting adjourns. And finally, when members of the administration are speaking, please stand up and speak into a microphone.
Anyone like to speak on pending legislation? Sam?
Yes, Sam Troy. I just, I see there's just one item on the agenda. A little disappointing. I thought maybe council, will you take any, does this count if I make a few comments in terms of suggestions that city council might have put on the agenda? I guess not, huh? You want to stick to the...
Any open session.
Stick to the one item on the agenda? I just wondered if the mayor, this is obviously the mayor's agenda, if the mayor could indicate, or someone could indicate. First of all, the $27,000, I inferred, I assume that that's coming out of the general fund, I suppose. No? ARP money, or is it a special, is it grant? Or whatever, if you could explain that. And I was under the impression again, and I know the details are more involved in the handouts to the council members, but I thought, I assume that this was the same person, Mr. Risinger, who had previous properties condemned. And if that's the case, I think that there ought to be some sort of fine, you know, if it's consistent. I don't know if that is the case. I'm not accusing him, but if that's the case, if it's the same person that involved with more than one dilapidated house or residence, you know, I think the city ought to consider collecting some sort of additional fine from this person. Continuous state of neglect. And again, it's not revealed here, and I didn't look at the other minutes, I mean, the details that are given out on the agenda to the council members. I also just want to put forward the idea that since there is a drastic shortage, I don't know if you're all aware of this, or you care enough, but there is a drastic shortage of affordable housing in the city. And maybe the mayor, the mayor's not here tonight, right? Maybe Mr. McCormick could chime in on this. I, well, I mean, you would agree that there is, it's pretty much nationwide, it's not just Wilkes-Barre, I know that. I guess especially the northeast, a shortage of affordable housing, which contributes, I think, to the homeless problem to a certain extent. You have to realize that, right? So isn't there any chance that when you find a property that is in such a terrible state, dilapidated state, that has to be demolished, city only gets, I guess, and I don't know if you can explain this, Maureen, since you're the assistant solicitor, the process by which the city comes to condemn, I guess the city must condemn the property first, neighbors or whatever call this to the city's attention. I'm not familiar with the whole process, maybe some of you are. So the property is condemned, then you get put out bids to demolish it because it cannot be renovated, I assume. But isn't there any chance that certain property, I mean, I understand the city's demolished something like 15 or 20 properties since the mayor's been, since his mayor was elected in 2019, I could be incorrect on that number. That seems like an excessive number. A lien is put on the property, and when the property is sold, if the owner is sold, owner sells it, then of course the lien has to be satisfied, right? Is there any chance in, as an alternative to that, that the property, that the city could ever consider renovating this property, or at least if you have to demolish it, maybe somehow arranging to buy it, unless you have to buy it at a tax sale, I don't know how that works, and put up that group that President Carter started to have them come in? I know that's been done before, I don't know if it's been done with demolished properties, to build, you know, to build something that might be affordable, very low, for low-income people to buy, you know, to put up a property, or to renovate that property, or to put up another property, a home or whatever, so, you know, someone who is economically disadvantaged, i.e. poor, can possibly afford that home, so we can put, you know, somehow to some small degree ease the housing crisis. That's just, you know, if you want to put that suggestion down, that's fine, but I just wonder where you guys stand on that, or Charlie, I don't know who would care to comment. But thank you for your time, that's all I have on that.
Anyone like to comment?
I'll say something. I agree with what you're saying to take a property, and I'm sure Mr. Brooks does too, that is rehabitable, but in certain cases, it would cost more to do that than what the end result would be. What you're referring to is similar to what the land bank does. The land banks do, take a property that is in that particular state, purchase it for a minimal amount from the owner with the stipulation that it's going to be turned around and resold, money put into it. But in some cases, and we looked at this particular property, it looks great in the front, we talked about this on Tuesday, but if you go around, it's falling in on itself. So there's no way some of these properties can be rehabbed, and I think this falls in that particular category as well. But I do agree, if you can rehab a property, it'd certainly be best, but in this particular case, it appears as though that's not financially feasible. But the land bank concept is, does exactly what you're just describing, takes properties and purchases them for minimal amounts and puts money into those and gets them back in as affordable housing.
The land bank.
We just became, and Mr. McCormick probably knows a little bit more about that than I do, but I know that the city just joined a land bank to do just that. But I think it'd be a great fit for some of these properties.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with that concept.
But in this particular case, it appears as though this one is not...
What's that?
It appears as though this property is not able to be saved from itself.
I see, thank you.
Anyone else pending legislation?
Bob Kalabaski, what's pending?
Just the demolition.
Demolition of a property on Franklin Street.
Oh, tear it down.
Okay. Kathy?
All right, so we have the one resolution and six sets of minutes. Need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Barrett.
Second.
Mr. Marconi.
Second.
Mr. Brooks.
Yes.
Mr. Marconi.
Yes.
Mr. Barrett.
Yes.
Mr. Belishko.
Yes. Okay, council presentations, anything today? Councilman Brooks.
Nothing.
Nothing?
Oh, come on.
Mr. Marconi?
Just, just one thing real quick again, Charlie. On North Washington Street, I was writing on it, we, it was just paved, right near Axle Rad, it was dug up, just something small, I don't know if you're aware of it, but it's not a real good patch job, if we can just take a look at that. Like I said, it was, it was just done.
Shorter.
Yeah.
Shorter, George?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, George. Yeah, yeah, just, just right there, if you can check that out. And I appreciate it, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Barrett, anything today?
One item. For the last, well, actually since school went back into session, so it's been a while. Concerns about traffic up in East End around the Mackin School, if you're familiar with us, between Chapel and Hillard Street. And that school was designed as a neighborhood school, but now there's buses, they bus students into that and out of that all day long, and parents dropping people off, and neighbors around there are very concerned. Actually, I referred it to the traffic committee, the traffic committee is kind of kicking it back to the school district, saying it's their problem, but I think there's things that we could be doing as well. So I'm going to send it back to the traffic committee, but it came up last night's East End Crime Watch meeting, a couple people voiced concerns, including people that live right on Chapel Street, that think it might be a better alternative if we made Chapel and Hillard Street one-way, similar to what we did at Heights Elementary when there's problems there with school buses and traffic and everything. You have traffic coming from both directions, meeting at the school, and the streets are very narrow, parking on both sides. A reasonable alternative would be to make them one-way. So I'm gonna, it's okay, I'm gonna kick that back to the traffic committee with that suggestion that maybe we do a study, an in-depth study up there. I realize the school district is responsible for getting people in and out, scheduling buses and those types of things, but it's, it's a very congested, small area. So just wanted to let you know that I'm going to be sending that back with council, with the administration's approval, back to the traffic committee to look at that with those suggestions in mind. And the residents that live on those affected streets don't really seem to have a problem with it, they think it would be good because they say they cannot, as it is right now, get in and out of their streets during certain times of the day. So I'm going to be sending that back, but just wanted to bring that to your attention, Mr. McCormick, that that's going on there. But that's it. Thank you.
Public discussion. Dan from Abide Coffee House.
Good evening. Great to be here, it's my first time at a council meeting. So I am a new co-owner of Abide Coffee House. We are celebrating our one-year anniversary coming up on Wednesday of being in the city, and we are thrilled and excited to be here. I've been in the city for 10 years doing street ministry, and was a former pastor at Church on the Square, so I've been around, and I just love being down here. So we're down there, new business, and it's been nothing but wonderful, from the administration to the mayor, to the council, to the Chamber of Congress, Diamond City Partnership, to all the departments that have really, that serve the city, the police chief and his staff, the fire chief and his staff, and I could go on and on, but we are more than delighted, and we appreciate the support that we receive from the city. It's from the council and the administration and the mayor and everybody down the line that has been truly wonderful to us in this huge change in my life where I retired after 29 years to buy a coffee shop in a city, and it's been spectacular. We did have a blip on the radar back in June where we did flood, we got the call at 1:00 in the morning as I was sleeping and dreaming of cappuccinos and lattes, the, we got a call from the police department, I believe, who said our shop was flooding. They are already inside with the fire department, shutting the water off in upstairs apartment, but the damage was done. But the city after that really pulled together, and we are grateful and thankful for everybody, and we really do appreciate it. We love being down here, and we're doing everything we can to bring the city together and make it like a big family. So I was talking to a few people, and what we're really excited about is the improvements going on in the city, especially the new sidewalks, the new brick, the new roadway in front of our shop, beautiful, picture perfect, they spent all summer doing it. Last week I went out to come to the bank, come around the corner, and what do I see? Spray paint on all the bricks and sidewalk from the utility companies. So I guess there was lack of coordination with the project that was going on and the utility companies because the day before they finished the final pavement, they had come in and started spray painting. And I have pictures of those for you, if you would like. Is that frustrating? The picture that you're looking, you're looking at, they're the same picture, I brought one for everybody so you could pass them out. The picture that you're looking at is front of Leadership Wilkes-Barre LCC, the background is Cafe Toscano, so you could see the marks that were done. So my concern was, are the utilities coordinating with the cities, the city administration, and the business owners and the residents when they are coming into neighborhoods, especially closing down streets? Being a small business, it's really tough to come in in the morning and find out that your street is being closed, especially if you're a one-way street like we are. The only way to access my shop coming with a vehicle is coming down Franklin, and we're a one-way. So when they do close that for some reason or another, which has happened in the past, there is no access to my store unless you are walking there. And, and we've seen that over and over at different times. Actually, yesterday, there was a closure up above Boskov's, more toward Wbury Studios, they closed the whole street down so cars couldn't come down to access the parking garage. What had happened is cars were then turning left on Franklin, going the wrong direction. The people coming down of the parking garage were blowing their horns, screaming, yelling, cursing, cars were coming up. So is there something that we could do with the utility companies to get notice, to be made aware of, to work with the city, to work with the police department, to work with flagmen to direct traffic around these areas, but also do we need to close whole streets down? I was talking to Drew Long over at Poor Coffee House today, and a recent situation a couple weeks ago is right in front of the, the business next to him, they did a cut in the pavement, and they were closed, they closed the whole block down for three days. Now, the cut was from the curb line to the yellow line, and they closed the whole block down from FNCB Bank on the corner of the square, right down to the corner of Union and Main Street for three days. I felt bad for him, and I went every day and bought my coffee off of him because he had no business. They put the signs up, road closed. They were working on a small section. So is there something we could do in the future, make the utilities aware that it's hurting small businesses, it's hurting residents, to be just aware of that and be conscientious of us being in business and making accommodations with the city to remedy that? I appreciate it, I thank you all for your support, looking forward to continuing in business here in Wilkes-Barre.
Thank you. Anyone?
Yeah. First, Dan, I want to, thank you for investing in Wilkes-Barre. I've been to your coffee shop dozens and dozens of times, it's wonderful to run into people there, and I wish you just the best success, and thank you so much for that. When it comes to these, lack of better word, graffiti, utility graffiti on the streets, this is one of my pet peeves, and it bothers me so much. Couple, a month ago, they put blue lines all up on my street, and then my neighbors ask me what's going on, I call the utility company, and the utility says, I don't know. I says, that's unacceptable. I want to know, what are you doing? What are you doing on my street? And he says, oh, we'll call, we'll have someone call you back. Well, two days later, UGI, someone from UGI calls me back, and he says, don't worry about it, the rain will eventually wash it away. I said, but what were you doing? Oh, I don't know, I just told to call you back. It was like weird, like zero customer service from the utilities. Charlie, Maureen, do you think there's a way that, I don't know if it takes a legislation or not, that we could impose on these utilities that they, one, notify everyone on the, what they're doing, when they do it? Two, can they do it just 24 hours before they're actually going to do something? Instead, you have this graffiti for months and months and months and months and months, and it makes, this is such a shame, thanks for bringing this photo. I mean, this is brand-new sidewalks, just put down, and it's all just a mess. So, but the answer is, it's obviously better communications with the utility companies. I hate us to come down on them and say, look, we're going to impose all this kind of legislation on you. Is there maybe fines we can do? Something, but this is unacceptable. Thanks.
Okay. Lynda Joseph?
I have to agree with Dan, and we all know that we've had this problem with the, with the paving of the streets, and then they come and they dig them up, and in our neighborhoods it happens constantly. I remember that the mayor talked about, we were going to fine them, I think $1,000 a day when the, the patching or the paving wasn't done the right way. And then he said that we pave it, and then we bill them. So I don't know what the answer is, but it really has been and continues, obviously, to be a situation that, that is, it's just, it's crazy that the money, the time that's spent, you've got the paving done, a street looks beautiful, and then they come in and one of them, whichever one, decides they're going to dig it up. So anything that can be done to try to coordinate that is definitely going to be an asset to helping everybody. The other things I want to talk about are all positive. Today, before I came, I saw the news, and I saw where the new building at Thomas C. Thomas was open for Keystone Mission, and it looks amazing, it is something that we desperately needed. I remember when the mayor talked, and I can't believe it was four years ago, when he said he was going to have that building, and today they opened that building. So hopefully the homeless will have some place to go, to eat, to shower, to stay, so I think that was wonderful. Also, the other thing I saw is that there was a groundbreaking for a home called Brian's Place, I believe, that's for mental illness, that we opened in Wilkes-Barre today, or they're going to build in Wilkes-Barre today. So that was wonderful. I just passed the evangelical church that was the former Planters Peanuts on South Main Street, they're having a Halloween party tonight. I passed by, there were tons of kids, the police were there, they have the entire right side set up with all kinds of stands and things, so there's a lot of action down there, and that was, that was really great to see. Speaking of Halloween parties, I wanted to thank the mayor, Councilman Brooks, our police, our fire, and our EMS, who all came to our Rolling Mill Hill party for Halloween on Sunday, which was a huge success, and they were great, they brought all kinds of stuff for the kids, they loved it. So I wanted to thank everybody for that, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Bob Kalabaski.
I have to go live, but I can't get it to go on. There we go.
Losing time, Bob.
I know, I know, I'll get there. Bob Kalabaski, I'm here tonight to talk to you about a situation that I'm sure that you're all aware of, and I'm wondering if council can do something to help us. As you know, there was a 12-year legal battle with a respected businessman in this area, Tom Greco, who can't talk to me about this case. But what I want to know, is there a way that you could hire counsel or the administration, an independent lawyer, to look at suing what I consider a bunch of gangsters who were warned they couldn't do what they were doing? They violated that man's rights, and if it wasn't for him being considerate, it could have cost the taxpayers millions, but he settled for the insurance, $2 million. But what I want to know, is there a way that we could get an independent lawyer to go after what I consider the gangsters, Tom Layton, Jerry DeSoy, and the band of gangsters at King's College? They all conspired to put that man out of business, and I just went down to try to find out how much the city had to pay, if at least we could sue them, because I believe we may have cost the taxpayers a couple, they're deductible, a couple hundred thousand dollars. Is there a way that we could go after these people? As you know, it's not nice when you get your rights violated, and I had my rights violated here by Tom Layton and warned him, you won't get away with this. I think they paid me $250,000, could have all been avoided, just like you, Mr. Belishko, when you threw me out of here. I'm going to be suing you, and I think you're a nice guy, but you violated my rights, and not once, but multiple times. You can't do that. People come down here, they're frustrated, just like me, I've been made to be a fool. How about when I exposed what was going on in the corruption in the police department, where you had the chief of police running, turning the police department into a speakeasy, drinking in the police department? But I believe that King's College, whoever all was involved, now there's gag orders, so that's why Tom Greco can't talk to me, and I know yous aren't going to help me, and I know this, I'd be better off to jump out of the window and land in a potted plant, because I know yous aren't going to do nothing, but I'm asking yous to try. I'll find out how much, and I'm asking council to get behind this. Let's at least go after these people. That was corruption, that was dereliction of duty. They were sworn to uphold the laws, and Tom Layton and his band of gangsters, when some of them over at the police station, who are no longer there, we need to, we need to make somebody pay that deductible. I wish we could make them pay the whole $2 million, but it all could have been avoided. But no, they had the police and everybody else over there, and violated that man's rights, and I believe the judge was very irate over it when it was all settled. So I'm asking council, and I'd like to poll yous when we're done, will you consider going after those gangsters at King's College, and also the gangsters that are, some of them are on big fat pensions? I want us to, let's go after them, let's teach them a lesson. It's like Mr. Belishko, if I'm successful suing him, the taxpayers shouldn't have to pay it, he should have to pay it out of his own pocket, because he's the one. Help me! Get out! Yeah, well, you can't do that. And when people get upset down here, you want to be a politician, you've got to be able to, to take abuse when people come in here. And I was wondering, and I'm going to ask yous all now, because my time is almost up, I want to know, would you consider hiring in an outside firm to come in here to see if we could go after these people? As you know, DeSoy's on a big fat pension, Layton's on a big fat pension, and so were the other people that were involved in this mess. You've got to understand, see, Bill, like you always work through it for the county or you work for the city, you know, Bill, you know, Mike, what it's like to try to be a small businessman, and it's not fair. So at this time, I'm going to ask to poll yous, and also, when I'm done speaking, I was wondering if we could have a moment of silence for the victims of that lunatic who killed all those people last night. So now I'd like to poll yous, will yous consider that? Now watch this, taxpayers. Mr. Barrett, would you consider looking into that?
Bob, I'm not going to take a position on that.
But, Bill, it cost your taxpayers a lot of money.
It was resolved in the court, Bob.
Well, I understand, but it cost the taxpayers money. Mr. Belishko, will you consider doing that? It cost the taxpayers money.
It's up to the mayor and attorneys to settle that.
Yeah, but I'm asking you people to, see, it's one thing to have them, but if you get behind him and say, hey, we agree with you, these people should not be allowed to violate people's rights, just like you, when you're violating mine, you, and if I get a judgment of $100,000, or $50,000, or $20,000, the city shouldn't pay for it, you should pay for it.
Thank you, Bob.
Now, Mr. Marconi, I'm asking...
We're moving on, we're not going any further.
Well, why not? I want an answer.
No.
Why?
You had your time.
I understand, but I'm being courteous, but why can't yous answer? See, taxpayers, this is what it is, these people, they will not help, they know I'm right, cost us all this money, and yet, Mr. Barrett, a man with law enforcement credentials, he knows this is wrong, and he knows King's College are a bunch of corrupt gangsters...
Bob, your time is up.
Well, I don't want to leave.
Well, you're going to have to.
Can't you answer me? Well, I don't want to go. I want an answer.
Sam Troy?
See, taxpayers, this is what you put up, Mr. Barrett.
Sam?
He knows all about law. You think he'll get help us? No. Mr. Belishko, who violated my rights, will he help us?
Bob, please, you don't have the floor, Bob.
Mr. Marconi, taking $30,000 here for health care, you think he's going to, you think he's going to answer? No.
Bob.
What?
Please, we're moving on.
You're not going to hit me with that, are you? Well, thanks.
Thank you.
I know, I know, I get a little bit excited, but yous all know, it's, it's, these gangsters should be made...
Thank you, Bob.
At King's College, Senator College, corrupt innovation, they should be arrested under the RICO Act.
Sam, your time's up.
Thanks.
Go ahead, Sam.
I have a few points to make, somewhere along the lines of what Bob said, but first of all, that, I don't know if Mr. McCormick wanted to comment on the situation with the old part of Coffin here, not the annex, but the old part, where, I think last time you said there was some progress made on that, but you talk about an eyesore, that really stands out prominently, and it's right near City Hall. I don't understand why this, the owner of that property can't be pushed a little more to rectify the situation there. And being concerned about trees and natural ambiance of the city, the way that I think has been violated...
has been violated, as you know, I don't know who was responsible, I thought it was the city who cut down all those trees here, in front of the old Cofflin, and around the corner on Union Street. Is it time to think about, I guess you have to talk to DPW on this, and you're the head of DPW now, we don't have Butch Fraddy, right, Mr. McCormick? And I talked to Dave, Dave Lewis, and he mentioned that this, might be interesting for you to know, Tony, the city does have some trees in storage, they got some trees, I don't know how many or what kind, but is it possible they could, I know it's improbable, but is it possible we can get moving on this before the planting season ends, at least maybe replace a few of them? And I called attention to Larry Newman about this, because it was within his realm, on the front of the Kirby Health Center, some vandal snapped a tree, route down to the root, ruined it, we're supposed to replace that, has not been replaced yet. What I would like to talk in the remaining time, a couple of things, I, you know, it's time to think about the budget, and I don't have the specifics yet, I would, I'm gonna try to, I want to get a copy, I don't know if any of the reporters have it, I'm sure you have one, Mr. McCormick, I have to say that I'm very disgruntled and, and appalled at the mayor's unmitigated gall to put forward this budget with, now, I could be wrong, but as I understand it, virtually every employee in City Hall has gotten a raise, including the mayor himself, which I didn't know if you guys knew that, $10,000 for the second consecutive year. I guess he feels he deserves it, I don't think he does, even if he did deserve it, we can't afford it, the city can't afford it. I like, I know the formal budget hearing is not till November 9th, I don't see there's too many people here, but I urge all people in attendance, all people here tonight, and I'm calling upon my fellow citizens who view this video of this meeting, to come to the November 9th meeting, and even though our taxes have not increased, the property, and that's, that's a good thing, our fees, I guess, have not gone up, but I am trying to advocate, as I have advocated, for the taxpayers and the residents who are struggling to make ends meet, and I don't think, as I see it, you guys are all good people, basically, despite what others might say, I think you do have a degree of empathy, and I think the mayor has some degree of that too, maybe not enough, that people are struggling to stay alive, I can vouch for myself, I'm struggling, I work part-time and get a, a very minimal social security payment to live on. In light of that, I don't see the ethics, government is about ethics, is it not, I mean, to a certain extent? You all have a moral responsibility before you vote on an issue, when you vote on something, you should ask yourselves, is this ethical in terms of doing the best thing for the greatest number of people in this city? I don't think voting for this budget, as it stands now, from what I understand it, with all these increases, and you people are including those increases, the councilmen, who already earned too much money, as it was pointed out, and benefits, in my opinion, you know, if you did more for the city, I might reconsider it, in terms of, you know, solving some of our financial problems, and there are problems, and I think next year, we're gonna end up facing them, so I'm just asking you five, to, to consider now, to vote against this budget as it is, which I know won't be till after the election, but to start thinking about ways that we, that you can leverage, that you can bargain with the mayor, I mean, as the way it stands now, who needs, who needs unions, who needs collective bargaining agreements, we have Mayor Brown advocating for everybody, this is not a healthy situation, believe me, I'm very frustrated to see that this lack, lack of the moral compass exists with the mayor the way it is, and I'm not putting the mayor down personally, I think he's, he's basically a good guy, but the way this budget stands, with all these, with these increases, I'm not saying you guys or anybody who get any increase doesn't deserve it, the question is, is it morally responsible? That's all I have to say in my time.
Anyone to comment? Okay, thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Attorney, at least we have a woman aside, for the big ones that have been with it last night. Do we have a woman aside?
Yes.
Hold on.
Everybody, hold on, let me take my hat off, you know there's a lot of nuts running around with guns. At least they did something.